Jeff, you're on.
I am responsible to preserving.
You want Cliff to remote into you?
And my children's children.
I am a very proud state member. I wake up.
Okay, Sally, send Jeff LaRusso his invitation again. Cliff, be ready to provide support.
Jeff looks supportive.
All right, well Sally.
Trying to fix Laura's microphone real quick.
Cliff, you started the meeting?
The meeting's recording.
Is Jeff on his way?
Jeff is on his way.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the 5:00 PM February 24th Village of Marineric Budget Work Session. I need a motion to open the meeting, please. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. While we wait for Mr. LaRusso to get on, Trustee Tofor is coming on now. While we wait for Mr. LaRusso to get on, I'm just gonna go through the ground rules one more time. We're going to have the staff present and give them an opportunity to tell us what they do and how they do it, and what they need to do in the future. Then the Board of Trustees will have opportunities to quiz the staff on what's going on, and then the Budget Committee will have some time to ask questions of the staff. Jerry, that's very disconcerting, having the governor look at me like that.
He's watching you, Mayor. He's watching.
I always feel that anyway. Okay, thank you. That's much better. We are waiting one minute for Mr. LaRusso. He's gonna be the first up to bat. He is the new Harbor Master. And he's in the process, I think, of getting on right now.
Tom, check your phone.
My phone? Okay, while we're doing this, waiting for Mr. LaRusso, I need a motion to add the executive session for the police to the agenda for tonight. We're gonna meet as Board of Police Commissioners to discuss the hiring or appointment of a new police officer. So I need a motion to add that to the agenda.
I'm happy to make that motion. I'm looking for the language. Do you need the specific language?
No, I think I covered it there.
All right, all right. So moved.
And I'll second. Bogey, you wanna call that?
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee Wintrip?
Yes.
Trustee Natchez?
Yes.
Trustee Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
What did we? I didn't hear what time?
We're gonna take a break after this. We're gonna reconvene at 7:45, like you requested.
Sounds good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, how we doing, Mr. LaRusso?
He's an attendee. He just has to be promoted.
Okay.
Hey Jeff, I'm promoting you.
Don't let him think that's a raise.
So we're starting with Harbor Master?
We're starting with Harbor Master.
Okay. I think the page is different. I think it's 127.
Okay. Hello, Mr. LaRusso. Unmute yourself, my friend. You're muted. Bottom left of the screen. Got it. You're on.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Mr. LaRusso. For those who don't know, this is Mr. LaRusso's first time in this situation. He is our new Harbor Master, and he's been doing a crackerjack job, from what I understand. So, Mr. LaRusso, do you have a presentation to make to us tonight?
Yes, just to give you a little background about myself, I just recently moved back into the village from up in Tuxedo, New York. I ran Brewers Post Road Boatyard for about 20 years as a mechanic and also assistant manager. And I've done just about everything in the boatyard aspect, as far as boat repair, building docks, all that kinda stuff. I've also owned my own marine repair business. I am a Mercury certified mechanic, and also an ABYC electrical certification. So that's just a little bit about myself. And I prepared a, just for the, I don't know, the... We're also in the process of doing a dock rebuild, with all the docks, because when I started here back in June on a temporary basis, I noticed that the docks were just in terrible shape and just needed a lot of repair and to be rebuilt. So I proposed to the village manager a dock rebuild program that was voted on back in October 26th and passed. And when I became full-time in January, we started that dock rebuild, and are in the process of rebuilding the D Dock, which is the docks in the East Basin, which is 20 floats, and we have 15 completed so far, from January to now. There's also a lot of room for improvements around the harbor, as far as trying to make extra dock space for kayaks, because we're getting a lot of calls for kayak spots, and people that are requesting kayak spots. So I'm also gonna build two additional kayak docks this winter, to accommodate another 50 kayaks, to try and increase some of the revenue that comes in to the village.
Sounds good.
And where would you be putting them?
We're gonna add one on each basin, so there'll be one in the West Basin and also one on the inside of D Dock. So that'll be the East Basin docks on the inside out by the boat ramp.
And Jeff, when you say this winter, might those kayak docks come online, for this summer? Or do you mean...
For this summer. We're gonna build, try and have them ready for March 1st.
And when we say kayak docks, is the docks, I mean, is kayak storaged out of the water?
Right. They're stored up out of the water. You know, you build the dock and then you put racks on top, and we can fit about 24 kayaks on each dock.
And what do you make the racks out of, PVC or do you use...
Aluminum. Aluminum.
It won't rust?
Right.
And what do we get for a kayak?
For a, not, for a resident, it's 180, and for a non-resident, it's 360.
Wow.
Are you planning something separate for the longboard, for the paddleboards, or it just...
Right now, it's just kayaks. We don't have a really big call for paddleboards right now. Because most of those people's just put them back in their cars and take them home, because they're not as cumbersome as a kayak.
Yeah, okay.
We really don't have a big call right now for paddleboards, but I mean, in the future, we can always adapt those racks to accommodate, you know, kayaks, sure.
Okay.
So 50 kayaks, even if they're all residents, it gives us an extra $9,000?
Yeah. Yes.
So what, Nor?
Yes, in lieu of the kayaks that we discussed that were gonna be stored in water?
No, we'll still have the in-water ones too, which is, we get a lot of complaints about them being in the water due to bottom growth and stuff like that on the kayak, so, you know, let's just try to...
Because they don't have bottom paint.
Right. Right.
All right, you wanna go through the numbers here?
Sure. I've prepared this budget. If anybody has any questions or any particular lines that they wanna talk about?
I think it'd be helpful if you walked us through the whole thing.
Okay.
So up on the screen, I'm displaying each individual line item of the Harbor Master?
Got it.
The personnel line has a 1% growth. It's a bit skewed because of, one, non-union personnel not receiving an increase, and the other receiving the union CSCA Kintry increase.
Right.
As you'll note, under the .2, overall, this account has a negative 1.91 increase, as reductions were made to seasonal labor, and marine and docks overtime.
It has a decrease. It has a net decrease.
Chris?
Is there an administrative assistant?
That was relocated into Recreation Budget last year.
Okay.
Yeah, we discussed that with the Board at the time.
Okay, you did. I just...
Is that continuing for this year, or what?
Yeah, she shares.
How is that being handled? Being shared, or what?
Yeah, her responsibility is shared. She does work for Recreation when they're busy, and she does work for Harbor when they are also busy this time of year, sending out forms.
So how does that work, Jerry, in the spring, when they're both exceedingly busy?
Right, so there's a, so she's, she has her station, her place, her desk is in the harbor, and then what she'll do is she'll be provided work from Jason, so that she can do work while she's answering the phone and receiving people who come to the door at the Harbor Master's office. That's how we share the responsibilities.
So it's basically 50/50?
Well, probably, you know, 60/40, 55/45, yeah, I would say. Maybe closer to 60/40, Dan.
We actually tend to get a little bit slower.
60 for Parks and 40 for Harbor, or vice versa?
40 on the rec, Harbor is 60.
Because we tend to slow down here in the office a little bit that time of the year.
Yep.
Because all the applications are in, and it's, you know, then the guys outside are busy getting everything ready, but she kinda has a little bit more downtime in the spring and summer than in the fall and winter. That's when she's actually the busiest, is the fall and winter.
Does it make sense for tracking to split it between the two budgets, or not?
It's a Recreation Title that she has, so we kept it in Recreation. We could split it, but the Recreation Title is under Jason, so that's why we left it there.
Okay. Let's continue going down a budget.
Next is the .2 codes. There's not a lot of money in the .2 codes. If you'll notice, every line, there's been a slight reduction. If there's any particular questions, as you're looking at the .2s, please feel free to jump in and ask. But overall, the .2 codes are under 10% reduced, in conformity with the Directive to have a 10% reduction. Any questions from the Board?
No, I don't have. But does Mr. LaRusso get a stipend for work boots and stuff like that also?
What was that? I'm sorry.
Do you get a stipend for work boots and stuff like that also?
Yeah, I believe Tiago gets the $1,000 from the Union, and then I have the 500.
Okay. Good. I just wanna make sure that you have everything you need to keep you safe when you're working up there. Okay, postage. Most of the applications that are coming in online, or are they...
No, they're all through the mail.
All through the mail, really?
We're working on trying to get it put online, so we can try and cut down on the postage, but we still have to mail the stickers and the parking passes out.
Right.
So... But we'd definitely cut down on some of it if we can move that to online, you know, at least through the big mailing in the, in January, you know.
But if people are applying for a spot, can they do that online, or do they have to mail?
Yeah, they can fill out, what we have is a questionnaire, and then they put all their information on there, and then Kristen will then send them a application.
Okay. Thank you.
So moving into the .4 codes, pretty much every line has remained flat. Overall, the .4s have a reduction of 10% as well. Once again, meeting with the Directive to reduce .4s by 10%, and the overall budget is down by 3.88%. If there's any specific lines you want us to talk about, please advise.
The Board have questions on this before I open it up?
You have $7,000 plus for the lockers and the fishing floats. What are we doing?
The fishing dock has to get redecked, and we're gonna also, when we do that, put the water that's run out there under the dock. Because right now, it's just laying on top of the dock, and it's a tripping hazard, and, you know, people go down there, they walk on it, they kick it, then it leaks. We have to go down there and fix it, so it's, you know, I wanna just try and get everything under the dock, so it's more protected. So we're not, you know, water's not running down there all weekend if nobody sees it and shuts it off, that we're not just wasting water.
And that line is that copper line?
No, it's all PVC.
All PVC?
So the water is for cleaning fish?
Yeah, that's run down that, and also I think they use it to rinse off the boats down there on that end of the dock, you know, where they have the water on the end of a dock. So people pull their boats up there, they rinse the boats off when they come in.
And that's where the village has people taking classes, right?
Right. Their recreation department uses it to rinse off the kayaks when they're done, that kinda stuff, so...
Any other questions from the Board?
No, you know, I mean, the harbor and our Harbor Island Park are the gems of the village and our most, like, beloved natural resources, and so I just thank you for what you're doing down there, making it, adding the kayak space for storage is wonderful. I mean, I know that's getting more popular, and redoing the docks, I just thank you for doing these necessary improvements and keeping things looking good and working down there.
Thank you. I appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you.
Terrific, especially, I think, the work on the floats. I've been watching since you had the crane, that was three, four months ago, and I've walked by, so I've seen how you're building them, stocking them, and... We all, it's, not just a park, but we try to keep an eye as we move along, and we're probably not emailing all the time, but we do appreciate all the work that goes on.
Thank you. We built, we built actual jigs, you know, when we build the docks, we built tables, so that, you know, everyone comes out the same, and it's just, it's really speeding up the production, you know, to make it a lot faster doing it that way.
They look good.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing it so quickly, because I know...
We have, just before you go, Joe, we have a member of the Budget Committee who has a question, Mr. Glenn Tippett. And Glenn, if you could, it's like we're playing Jeopardy. If you could do it in the form of a question.
Glenn, unmute yourself.
Glenn? You're up to bat. You need to unmute yourself.
Hello?
Aye.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
First of all, good evening. I first wanna thank Nora. She actually sent me emails when I was in the hospital wishing me well, and I wanted to acknowledge that I much appreciated. I'm not sure if she was just checking up to see if I was coming back, or if she was... But I believe it was in my best interest, so I thank you very much.
Sorry, when you were not at the meetings.
A couple of items. You're reducing the budget for printing and stationary and postage to below what we're spending now. And you still got four months in the year. How are we cutting the postage in half? And how are we reducing the amount we're spending on printing and stationary by about a quarter? Also, on repairs and such, are we moving things into the capital budget, or do we have something in the capital budget that we moved that we're not paying in the operating budget? Thank you.
As far as repairs on what? What line you looking at?
Just general repairs, or do we have any projects that are gonna be in the capital budget?
All the big projects are in the capital budget, all the dock builds and all that, that's all capital budget. As far as the postage, I'm trying to find that on here.
That's on line 128, halfway down, printing and stationary and postage. You have 3422 spent on stationary and postage actual this year. They're reducing it to 2,800, and your postage is at 1196, and you have 600 for postage.
What it says is that you budgeted $3,600 last year, and already we spent 3,400, and we're cutting it down to 2,800, and how do we expect to meet that goal?
Correct.
Yeah, well, most of the... Because when we go to mail out back in the, this time of the year, it'll be after this budget is over, so I think it carries over to the next year, because of how the cycle runs, on when they get mailed out and when they come back. Like, she's almost done with mailing everything out.
And if I could, this year, we had an additional mailing, because we had to get the S-Dock situation fixed up. There were many, many people on a handwritten S-Dock waiting list, where we had to contact each one of them, which we have to contact, because we don't, we only have their address and their name. We had to contact them by mail, and we had to see if they still wanted to stay on the list, and kind of responses we got, so we took that on. I guess it was sometime in the summer? I can't recall.
It was during the summer.
That was before me, so I started June 15th.
Yeah, so it was late spring, early summer, and that brought up the cost of the postage.
And as far as the maintenance and repair, with all the dock replacement that we're doing, it should address some of those long-term issues we've been experiencing for the last 20, 30 years with docks that should've been replaced long ago, so... I think you should see a reduction in some of those maintenance repairs.
Right. And also, some of that too is the maintenance on the boats, which now, because of my background, I can do in-house. It doesn't have to go out to a subcontractor to do it.
Right.
Excellent. So you're taking care of the motors on the...
On all boats, yeah.
But the next...
Mr. Mayor?
What?
I have a question, or some comments.
Okay, I was gonna do the Budget Committee people who have their hand up, and then it'll be time for you to have a question or comment. Thank you, Dan. Ellen? Ellen Hopp?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. I just have a quick question. I think it's great that you built the kayak racks as a way to bring in more revenue, but I'm just wondering what the cost of building those racks were, so when we break even?
The cost of those docks is... For the dock and racks, so the two docks would be about $8,000 for both.
Excellent. So we could break even in a year?
A year, yeah.
Make money, pay.
Yeah. You'll probably end up a little bit ahead in a year, the first year.
That's great news. Thank you.
Building them in-house is just a lot cheaper than, you know, getting them built outside.
Yeah.
Okay, that was, that was my only question.
Thank you, Ellen. Mr. Natchez?
So, Ellen has actually brought up what I, part of what I was going to talk about. I think what we need, as we get approaches such as Jeff's, which are very constructive and meaningful, is to have an analysis of, you know, the cost effectiveness, how much it costs, you know, what we charge, et cetera. So we can, you know, have a cost-benefit analysis, which helps us in decision-making. That carries forward to the capital projects as well, Jerry. I think that would be very helpful in trying to set priorities, et cetera. I don't want to be the wet blanket, but when we are adding docks or replacing docks, we have to be in conformance with the various regulatory requirements. And I'm not sure whether we are or not, but it's becoming a big issue for municipalities for compliance.
Okay.
Thank you, Dan.
We're replacing the docks in kind, exactly to say.
It doesn't make any difference. You need a permit from the DEC. You do not need a permit to redeck, to redock, but if you are redecking, there are other regulatory requirements or other maintenance requirements that are required under different regulations. I'm happy to sit down with you again and go through them all. Something I'm unfortunately very familiar with. But there are municipalities that are receiving very steep penalties at this point.
Oh no, we don't want any more of those. Okay.
And when I say steep penalties, I'm not talking about $1,000 bucks.
Oh, I'll take care of it then. We'll look at it.
Okay. Anybody else on the Board? Mr. LaRusso, thank you very much. This was, you did an excellent job on your first time at bat.
Thank you.
Thank you for the good work you're doing down there.
You're welcome. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye, Jeff.
All right. The next up to bat is the Clerk Treasurer's Office, the ever-popular Augustino Fusco.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. As all you are familiar, at the Clerk Treasurer's Office, responsible for Treasury, Tax Receiver, Accounts Payable, MIS, Management Information Systems, Clerk Functions, the Registrar, and Records Management. Right now, we'd like to walk you through, we did be prepared to report with a bunch of statistics, but we like to really focus on our accomplishments for this year, and what our goals for next year are. Then, if you want, we could go line by line and review each item. At this point, Sally Roberts, Deputy Clerk, is gonna talk about our accomplishments and our goals for next year.
Thanks, Doug. I will handle the Clerk's Office side of it. Laura will do Treasurer, and then Cliff is going to weigh in with IT. I think you all know what we do. You're quite involved in everything that we do. So last year, our accomplishments, we trained the two remaining departments on our foil software, that was the Manager's Office and the Police Department, so everyone can use the foil software to answer their foils and put their times in for their foils. We continue to shred documents from our records management facility, and we are using the Westchester County Shred Mobile. We are no longer paying for an independent company to come and shred our documents. We secured additional areas at the Halsted Avenue facility. One is for the Building Department to store their records. And then the third one is, we envisioned an office for the historian and for Victor Malinowski, where people could come and they could search for our historical records. We haven't set that up yet. We did that right before COVID hit, and so we haven't done anything with that additional space. But that's one of our goals for next year. We got a new Public Information Officer. We hired a new Public Information Officer in the last year, and we worked in training him on the website, and we continue to work with him on the website, the design and the content. Cliff and I worked very closely on Zoom. He may get into that more, as you all know, on getting Zoom up and running for the Board of Trustees, and then all of the other boards and committees, and training the liaisons. We worked, and Laura, I'm sorry, you have this on yours as well, and Laura really did more work on this than the Clerk side of it, but she did work on getting all of our license and permits online, so you can apply for all of those. We do still have to mail out the permits and the licenses, the dock licenses, parking permits, but you could do all of that online, and that's one of her goals, sorry, Laura, I'm stealing your thunder, to work with DPW and Harbor Master. And so that will reduce his cost of printing and postage as well, so that might be one additional reason why his costs can go down. Let's see. We secured a vendor to install glass on, in front of the Clerk Treasurer's Office. What we have there now is not bulletproof, and it also has big, open areas where air can go through. So we secured a vendor. He was, he will come in and do that, I believe, before we open up on April 1st, and it will be bulletproof in both of those areas, and we will have... And it will be bulletproof in both of those areas and we will have a little microphone that we could speak to people through. So we won't get their air. We implemented a cloud-based version of Laserfish in the hopes of greater searchability for residents on our website through the document portal. And we implemented a ring doorbell at one twenty-three. So we know if people are there, now that we're closed and we can speak to them through the ring doorbell. And uh, we consolidated all of the, which didn't make it to the list. I don't know what happened. We consolidated all of our parking permits, as you all know, in the last month or so. And we also went with another vendor who does our permits, our hang ticks and also our permits for the harbor. And we cut our costs by about two-thirds for our parking permits. So those were our accomplishments and um, our goals for next year, in addition to setting up the office if we can, if we're going to keep the space at Halsted for the historian and for Victor, um, is to continue working with Destiny software. That's our foil software and the only thing that it doesn't do that we would like for it to do, so it's sort of a one-stop shopping, is that we can handle all of our appeals through the software and that doesn't have to be separate. You know, the manager's office doesn't have to do that separately. It could all be done and then it can all be tracked through that software as well. So that's it for me, unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Sally.
Sally, great job. Uh, next Laura is going to talk about the Treasury side of the office.
You're muted, Laura.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure because I'm kind of using my phone as a, as a speaker as well. Okay, so some of the things that we did um, this year, this crazy year, because we had to set up different um, means of getting payments was we installed the mailbox, which worked out really well out front. So this way, since we weren't open to the public, we did receive a lot of calls. People, you know, people are used to coming into the office to drop off their tax payments. So that worked out really well, not only for tax payments, but for, there's just people that just don't work well online. So they were able to do parking permits and any kind of documentation for the payroll department, the manager's department. So it worked out well. And with the ring doorbell, like um, Sally said, that was implemented, we were able to talk to people. We have an iPad set up with a video and we can talk to people that are out front. So we can give them the information that they need and anything they have to drop off, they could just put right in the mailbox. And so it seems to work out well and even with deliveries for FedEx and UPS, if it fits, they were able to drop it off there too. So we're going to keep that. That's something that's going to be ongoing. This way, when people come in, they don't, when people come here, they don't necessarily have to come to the window to just to drop off things. So we can keep the residents, less people in the office, the better. And as far as, and we implemented, like Sally said, the online payments for um, for the parking permits and the dock licenses, which, which worked out well because we get instant notification of them. So usually it's almost within the same day, if not a day lag for the permits and we get them right out. And nobody really had an issue waiting. So that worked out well too. And um, we had our audit. This is the first year we had to do our audit virtual, which um, which again, with the help of Cliff and setting up um, uh, files, links, you know, that and that, we were able to drop in what the auditors need. They were able to send it back and we were able to do everything virtual. And not have them come into the office at all, which might be a way to do it going forward or at least limit the time they need to come into the office. We continue to work now that we have an H R and a payroll department separate. We're able, we've been working with them, setting up schedules, making reports for anything we need to file with the state and our annual report. So that's working, that's working well. And I guess um, as the board knows, we've always done an analysis of the revenues and expenses, but this year we really focused on it and we, and Augie created an excellent report and a whole packet that we're able to deliver every month um, to you guys. So I hope that's very informative and giving you guys what you need. Um, and of course, if you need anything else, just let us know. Let's see, as far as the office is concerned, and this was a group effort with everybody, we were able to install the Plexiglas to make sure, you know, to keep everybody safe. We were able to do the A B schedule. We implemented that with the help of the manager's office. We all worked together. So those are some of the accomplishments um, we did. Our goals going forward, some of them had to be delayed a year, which we wish we had time, but due to COVID and doing other things, like we really want to update our online service so that people can go in and see their tax information for not only the current year, which is what they can see now, but we want to be able to see prior years. And that works well for the title searches because right now they have to call us. And the girls are great with them, but they have to stop what they're doing. And so that's one of our goals. And again, like Sally mentioned, to get Harbor and D P W up and running on breakfast. And that's about, that's, that's about it. And updating the window, like Sally said, for payments and putting in a drawers to keep everybody safe and reduce contact with the residents. So unless I missed something.
Because I'm in there a lot and I get the opportunity uh, to watch you folks work and interact and to uh, observe what's going on. I just want to comment that, you know, the way in the past year especially, that you've all been able to improvise and innovate has been really amazing to watch. And the esprit de corps in the whole office, uh, that everybody's, you know, willing to help each other, everybody jumps in. Uh, it's really, you know, it, it, it makes you feel good about the people who work in this community. And I, I just want to tell you that I've noticed it and I know I sometimes purposely see if I could distract you folks, but you keep your head down and you keep doing your work. Uh, so I just want to compliment you, you two especially, but you know, all, all the folks who work in that office. You all do a great job. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, you want to run us through the numbers, buddy?
Uh, one second. Uh, the next department is the management information system and Cliff's going to go through the current accomplishments and the, what we are goals for next year. I want to add also, a lot of things that we accomplished six years because we had the support of Jerry. Every idea we had, he took serious. The camera in the front, the mailbox. I mean, I was actually scared to present it, but he took it serious and he gave us support. And you know what? It worked out really great. Uh, one thing we really want to do next year is put the Harbor Master all digital and online. And you know what? Jerry's always backed us on these projects and I think he's going to do that in the future as well. Now Cliff is going to talk about management information systems and then we can run through the, each line item.
Mike Cliff?
Okay, so one year ago at this time, we, we were actually working on a software rollout. Um, and then we had to pivot for obvious reasons due to the pandemic. Uh, so one of the biggest accomplishments um, to highlight with regards to I T was that we had to implement new technologies to facilitate our work from home initiatives um, in response to the pandemic. Uh, employees, they were issued laptops, webcams, printers, scanners, tablets, phones, basically anything we had in inventory, we ended up issuing to employees to set up their home offices. And then over the months uh, leading into the summer, we had many open orders for different pieces of equipment such as webcams or laptops um, that became very scarce due to the pandemic because everybody started working from home. That being said, uh, we've been able to adhere to all the executive orders, uh, local and statewide with ensuring that everybody has the ability to remotely connect to our village network. Um, the only time we ever encountered a major problem, I would say, was uh, back in August when we had those power outages, because when the power's out, you can't do much. Next thing to highlight would be the um, the video conferencing, I would say, uh, with regards to um, utilizing Zoom webinars. Uh, the Village of Amerenick first signed up for Zoom uh, back in two thousand fifteen and we barely used it. Basically, if a trustee was on vacation and they wanted to teleconference in, they would join in for a board meeting. And that's how we were utilizing it back then. Then March eleventh occurred and the state shut down and all these new executive orders went out about uh, open meetings and how we had to uh, conduct those meetings. And uh, I sat down with Augie and uh, we, we spoke with, we sat down with Augie, Sally. We spoke with Jerry about it and we, we came up with a plan. And to my knowledge, um, the Village of Amerenick was the first municipality um, in Westchester County to implement a full digital, fully digital webinar-formatted meeting um, for our public meetings, where we have the ability to interact with the public um, and broadcast over Zoom as well as YouTube. Uh, if you take a look, our first meeting was March twenty-third. And uh, I had put out a bunch of emails about how to uh, go about hosting these meetings and how to ru- uh, run these meetings um, with regards to the uh, the Zoom platform. And that tho- those emails were aggregated and then shared with multiple municipalities as well as uh, government offices throughout New York State. So I think that that worked out really well and uh, and yeah, I think it's, it's kind of a, a feather in our cap, so to say, that uh, that we were the first municipality to kind of do that. The next thing is uh, we added secure ways for employees to connect to our village network remotely. So with the work from home initiative, um, we needed to have people have, or we needed people to have the ability to connect to our systems in a manner that didn't compromise our network security. So what we ended up doing uh, was we implemented what's called a mobile V P N solution. So the same way that we have our various offices throughout the village connecting to each other so that everybody has access to our servers and our resources, such as printers, faxes, all that kind of stuff. Um, we needed a solution that would enable people to do the same thing from home. And I sat down with uh, Joe, who also works in I T. And we planned out and implemented um, the uh, mobile V P N client that we're using uh, through our networking equipment. And once again, I know I've spoken about it in the past, but we use uh, Netgate uh, hardware uh, that runs an open source solution that's utilized by the military. And it's uh, it goes by the name of P F Sense. Uh, the nice thing about that open source solution is that it is um, secure, tested, readily available and you don't get nickel and dimed for licensing fees, like with other vendors, where we would have run into uh, potential uh, costs relating to the number of users trying to utilize uh, a mobile V P N solution. Then, once we got that up and running and everybody was connecting, we started getting some complaints that people were uh, experiencing latency issues and they were getting cut off uh, here and there. So we looked into it, we reviewed the logs, we identified the problem that uh, we needed to upgrade our hardware because we, in the past, didn't ever have up to fifty to seventy-five percent of our staff, depending on any given week, remotely connecting. So we upgraded our routers and uh, transferred our configurations over and since then, everything seems to have stabilized. Next thing to highlight is uh, planning for when our office is open to the public. In preparation for that, we've purchased technologies to aid with limiting person-to-person contact. I know uh, Sally and Laura have already touched on it, but we uh, we put uh, a doorbell camera in the regatta. That's worked out very well. We have uh, another one that we'd like to put at the back door. So in case we have any uh, any staff members who, who need to get in, who might not have their key, um, it'll just make it another easy way to get in. We, so, so that we're not reliant only on just an iPad, we, we have uh, doorbell chimes that need to get installed. So we have this equipment that's ready to go. It's just with um, the A B scheduling. It's tough to uh, to have work orders um, completed with people or the necessary people on site on those given days. But we should be ready once uh, once we do open our doors. Then the final thing is uh, in order to save money, we reduced uh, spending significantly and we opted to forego refreshing um, desktop hardware in the, over the past fiscal year. Um, and we only replaced computers when absolutely necessary. So normally what we like to do is uh, we like to do a refresh of our hardware at about twenty percent per year so that after about five years, then we, we just start the cycle all over again. That way, we don't run into a situation where we have systems up and running for over five years and then we get hit with one big bill all at once. But because things were tight this past year for obvious reasons, we uh, decided that we were going to maintain our current hardware unless we experienced failures, in which case we would have to replace something. So those were the, the main things that I thought were worthwhile highlighting with regards to uh, accomplishments over the past fiscal year. Um, and then with the upcoming year, our goals are going to be to uh, review our current equipment that's in production uh, with regards to servers and desktops and hopefully uh, things will be getting better and we'll be able to uh, identify which systems proactively need to get replaced before, before we run into a scenario where it becomes an emergency case. And uh, that's about it.
You also did the phone system.
Oh, that's right. Yeah. Um, right around October, November of two thousand nineteen, we had been planning out a phone system migration. Uh, that was slotted to uh, that was slotted to go into effect in March of two thousand twenty. And then that got pushed back because of the pandemic and we finally got it rolled out by the end of April of two thousand twenty. And uh, and with that rollout, we've been able to uh, cut costs significantly, from my understanding. And we were able to cancel our old phone service and we are now under one contract with one company that's on state contract, uh, which is Carousel Industries. And uh, everything has been running very smoothly with that new phone system.
Thank you very much, Doug. And thank you for a great job this year uh, under difficult circumstances. You're the go-to guy uh, whenever somebody has a problem in the office with hardware or with uh, just navigating technology. I know for me too. I just want to say that we're going to have a hard stop tonight at seven o'clock. We're going to adjourn and we're going to reconvene at seven forty-five, just for people who are watching. But I, I think we'll probably be done before that. But uh, Augustino, would you like to go through the numbers? You're muted, Augie.
Yes, Mayor. We're going to start bringing up uh, the budget accounts, look at the individual line items. Laura, are you ready to bring those up on screen? Momentarily. So the first account we're going to review is the Clerk Treasurer's line. The point one codes, which is personnel, have gone up by one percent. That number is a bit skewed because you have non-union personnel in there that are, do not reflect any increases.
Right.
The, Laura, if you scroll to the next page. Next, we have the point two codes. Uh, the point two codes. Oh, I think you're in the group four. Can you go to the point twos? There they go. Uh, the point two codes stayed flat. And now we're into the point four codes. The point four code, in order to meet the ten percent reduction, we eliminated most of our training out of our budget. Uh, every other line there is pretty tight and we've kept those in. Overall, the budget stayed at, last page, Laura? Was reduced by negative one point seven six. Uh, if there's any specific questions in this budget, anybody has, uh, the floor is open.
Yeah, I mean, what, what impact will eliminating training have?
Well, it's hard to keep up with all the new, you know, uh, Controller's Office training classes they come out with. Every year, Gatsby comes out with a new opinion. Every year, Gatsby comes out with a new opinion. We're going to have to research it on our own. Training classes do help because we have access to all of that. We could sign up for NICOM classes as well. But I think we should be good because the manager's budget has some training money in there. And if we really need a class to attend, we could bring it to his attention.
Okay. And how much can you just go to that line so I can see it again, please?
Sure.
Highlight it with the cursor.
I don't know if we could highlight it towards the bottom of the page.
Just run your cursor across it.
250 time at the bottom.
Okay, I see it.
Yep.
But I mean, at this stage, we're not doing any in-person training anyway.
Excuse me, Laura.
At this stage, there's very little in-person training anyway. So the controller's training is usually free, most of it. Right? So it's just a matter of carving out if you have time to do it. But we're all doing it remotely anyway.
Yeah, but they also do training with software and different applications still. There's an old New York State, but I understand what you're saying.
I attended today's presentation. It was really terrific. And part of it is that they are really scaling up. And they're adding more training, they're adding more resources. Since I, you know, in the last two years and particularly this year, their resources under everything has been made available. You used to find one, two, three things now. Everything, most, most things, not everything is recorded, but most things are there and the amount of resources in is just just tremendous. So probably doesn't cover everything, but but the point is they have really scaled up and they are they're very, very helpful.
NICOM does a good job, Victor, I will say.
I was talking about the Controller's Office, the Controller's Training was terrific.
NICOM's Control Office does do a good good job. A lot of the classes sometimes we take with GFOA, which is very good for, you know, new employees that are onboarding so they can learn more the accounting and the capital stuff in the background. But once again, like I said, if there's any class where we really see that is 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 good, we could present it to the manager or to the board and ask for funding.
I think today they mentioned the only one, the only class they're charging for is the accounting school. We took that two years ago, which is like a week long, anybody, but it's not expensive. But anyway, this is your turf. I was just bringing that up because the point is they're scaling up the resources and it's much better.
Anything else you want to show us?
No, unless you have any questions, I mean, the the line, the budget's pretty flat.
It is, and I appreciate that. You had a lot of dreams of improvements, but they have to be defrayed, unfortunately. Okay, anybody in the Budget Committee? Ellen, please let Ellen in.
Hi, it's not a budget question, but I didn't know when else to say this. And I've emailed Jerry about it in the past. I just wanted to call out my dealings over the last couple of years with both Augie and Sally have been phenomenal. Laura, I'm sure you're supporting Augie and a lot of the questions he gives me. And what Cliff has done with technology this year has been great. So I just wanted to call everyone out publicly and say thank you.
Oh, thank you.
That's very nice, Ellen, and I agree with you 100%. Thank you very much for pointing it out.
Yep.
Mr. Aubrey.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of overview questions. First, this is very good. The Clerk Treasurer's budget, obviously, a very modest, modest change. I think it's really keeping the keeping an eye on the expense situation. But when do we talk about the overall revenues? I mean, I think that's recorded through the the Clerk Treasurer's Office. So when is there a look at the revenue picture, the expectations for this for next year, excuse me? Is that is that later in the process?
Yeah, it's usually later in the process line because you know, information and tax receipts, especially sales tax comes in sometimes during this. So they have a better take on it, but I'll let them speak to it. But I believe my experience is usually later in the process.
So Len, we have a meeting scheduled for April 13 to discuss revenues and expenditures in particular. The manager's already taken care of that to schedule that date. So that's when we'll be reviewing the revenues.
Yeah, okay, thank you, because I did have the schedule. It is. It's later in the process. And it sort of it says if necessary. So my own point of view is I hope we I hope we don't we don't I hope I hope that meeting is does go forward.
Yeah, I'm sure it's going to be necessary, Len.
I have a few questions, so I think something that Dan mentioned, which came to my mind, which was the the harbor revenue. I don't know that the harbor harbor master budget is something like 220 or 30,000. I forget the exact number. But I think the question was is when you look at the total revenue related to the harbor, let's say attributable to the harbor master, what is that? Off the if anyone knows that off the top of your head, does it match the total expenses?
I think it's far off the top of my head. I think it far exceeds, but I'll let the staff.
I think it's usually like between 700 to $800,000, but I think we'll get the exact numbers.
Okay, I mean, it's it's an excess of that.
Multiples, yeah, multiples and excess.
Yeah, okay. Because I think it's important from an analytical point of view, the issue about the secretary and where the person's budget is, on the one hand, from a expense and revenue side, it's important to make sure that that individual, the share and spent in the harbor master would be counted. So I think that's that's good. And then finally, just my final question would be around the debt service number that that will be discussed at a later at a later meeting.
April 13th, when we discuss revenue and expenditures.
So that's covered there.
Yes.
Because I think you may recall, Augie, members of the Budget Committee had a question on the on the debt service number, which appeared in one reported over, I think it was 3.7 million. And then at a lesser number, two, four or so in subsequent reports. So I just to let you know is that that question is still outstanding.
Can I follow up, Mayor?
Yeah, sure. Okay, Augie, look at one second, Vic. All right, Augie, looking that up. Go ahead, Victor. Go ahead, Victor.
No, I let him respond.
No, I think he's still looking something up.
So floats last year, we we took in about 324,000. The moorings, we took in 78,165. Ramp 12,005. And the harbor master fees was 11,250. Their budget's about 239,000. So we're definitely bringing in more money than we're expanding. What was your other question, Len?
About debt service.
It was about the it was about debt service. It was we've seen in reports that have come out of your office. I think it was the one it was a while ago back in November, which is I recall the debt service number was like 3.7 million. But in the audit and in subsequent reports, it was around 2.4. Don't hold me to the exact numbers. I think several on the Budget Committee, we just wanted to understand what the difference was and what the real debt service numbers. And we're talking about the, you know, obviously excluding anything related to the waterworks.
The audit is showing actual expenditures? Well, first and foremost, I have to see what documents you're actually talking about. What I believe you're talking about is that the audit shows the actual debt service expenditures while other projections coming out of my office are not only the actual, but include what we anticipate for other projects coming down the line.
Okay, okay. And and is will that be included in the budget? In other words, the anticipated financings in fiscal year 2022? Or the actuals for 21?
Yes, in the budget, next week I should have the budget document out with all of the financing for debt service and you'll see all our anticipated debt along with our current debt.
Okay, for next fiscal year then?
Yes, for next fiscal year.
Okay, okay, good.
We're required to file a budget document on March 19th. We've tried to get this budget out a little earlier to the mayor and the board so they have a little more time to review it. So in the interim, we're still trying to put together that actual budget document along with preparing tax for the tax lien sale that's due in two weeks.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, thank you. First and then finally, I just want to thank Augie and his team. They do do a great job. In particular, I want to recognize Sally, who sometimes I ask kind of dumb questions about meeting time and what's where, and she's patiently and promptly always responds. So thank you.
It's my pleasure, Len. There are no dumb questions. And if I could just add one thing that we had dropped off from our goals was in previous years is that we want to be the best darn Clerk Treasurer's Office in the entire state of New York.
That's right. So next, we're going to bring up Records Management. Laura, can you bring up 1460?
Hold on one second, Victor.
I think it's timely to follow up on 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 Len's comments because I had I had similar thoughts. I think April 13th to review to look at revenues is too late. It's a month and a half. We should look at this, I suggest, in about two weeks. And if we recall that we started good this initial, we had an initial discussion on revenues at the first budget discussion, which was good. And we had emails going back and forth. That has answered most of the concerns, but not all. For example, I just, you know, just very simple, you know, it's clear that sales tax, we're going to get another two payments of million each, but we're still down 3.5 billion. Right? In revenues expected for this year. And we still need to discuss a little bit of the expected sales tax of almost four. I think you're bringing it down, but I would like to review those figures and all the others. I would suggest the board either look at that in maybe the second week in in we just dedicate 10, 15 minutes to to see where we stand with that. You can send us something ahead of time. I think reviewing this in 13 of April, it's really fair way out. I was actually gonna go to the second topic, which is on 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 service. Service of that. Also think we, as soon as you get the info, send it to us. And we may break this in two sessions, but leaving it to the very, very end is 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 not it's going to be complicated. It's really, I would, I don't feel comfortable with that, especially with what which with what is going on. And even actually, I had a question today in the in the seminar with the Controller's Office about about the ser- service of that relating to water infrastructure, whether that should be part of the rates. I don't want to open that discussion now, but the answer I had asked a couple of years ago and I asked it today, and the answer is you do have for if you if we're going to serve have good amount of of the of cover the infrastructure for joint waterworks. We know that it's coming. We know already we have, we have, we know it's at least 2 million, right? For just one, just for the just for the engineering of the of the filtration, just for the engineering. And of the, and we know we're going to incur 30 million in no time. That has to start to be folding into the into the water fund. It's a larger discussion, but picking up on picking up on on Audrey, I think it should be we should we should have a good conversation on this at some point.
Yeah, just just to follow up on what you're saying about the waterworks, we're going to get in the next couple of weeks a projection from the waterworks about what our rate should be, our water rate should be to cover those capital improvements.
I think it should be a work session, Mayor. Since I've been here for years, they come and they give us something. It's kind of at last. And they, yes, they're very helpful, giving us all the answers, but they've done the analysis. Now, let me finish last.
I can have them come to a regular meeting and present.
I think that, yeah, let's do it in a more in one or two sessions and have a work session on this. Because I do know, for example, the town does identify the projects they would need to pay next year. They've been doing it for years and we should do something similar. So so but doing this at the very end in in April, you know, this team is fantastic, but but they're going to be overwhelmed. So so my those are two two important points, I think echoing what Len said. Not leave it for April, but fit, you know, accommodated in 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 March in a way that that that, you know, Augie and his team can deal with it. But also because it was very clear today that that the Controller's Office made it clear more and more than although this is a team effort, we we're on the hook and they are they are looking and the responsible is the Board of Trustees and they are providing more services. But at the same time, making sure that 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 they 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 inform everybody what's out there. They know we know what the resources are. But in essence, they'll they'll be following very, very closely and it's us, the Board of Trustees, who gets this. So you do the work. We have terrific team. But I think the more dialogue like what's been as we're showing the last couple of sessions, it's just terrific. We get very good work done.
You know, I just want to point out that when what we have to do also is when the Westchester General Water Works suggests a rate, you know, they suggest that rate for a reason. And a lot of it is the debt coverage that we're going to have to deal with for big projects like that. And a while back, the Village of Maranick cut the water rate. And if we had not have cut the water rate, we'd be in a much better condition today to deal with the expenses that we have moving forward. So I think that, you know, we have to be honest with people that these are large expenses. They're going to be borne via the water rate, not by your tax rate so that they're coming and, you know, there's nothing we can really do about it. I'm just saying it's more for the general public who might be watching. I think you all know this.
Right, Mayor, but I think the situation now, I don't want to make if it's different or not, but now it's clear. We know the five-year capital plan they presented, we know the situation now is going to happen before it was. Now, now we have something very specific in front of us, so so we can we can probably even be more focused and thick and clarify all this and be more proactive.
And I will bring them in to do what once they come up with the water rate that they're anticipating, I will bring them in to do a presentation at a regular meeting and just let them have the time they need to explain it and let it let the board have the time they need to ask the questions that they need. And I'll have them give the information beforehand so that, you know, you can look at the data and ask questions.
Okay.
Following up on this discussion, I think it would be also very helpful not only to update the five-year capital projects, which they are starting to do last year, but to list or to identify the last two years' projects that were undertaken and what they are projecting in the next two years you know, of potential anticipated expenses. Because we're, you know, if we start adding up what we have, what has come about, it is not insignificant and we need to plan for that. And just, and that's that's going to affect the the entire budgetary structure.
It doesn't affect the Village of Maranick's budget, what it affects the water rate. I mean, Dan, I have to keep saying that because this gets convoluted all the time.
I'm sorry, when you're done.
You know, and this is not you know, it's something that affects the Village of Maranick's budget. I understand it affects the taxpayers or the ratepayers. But, you know, I don't want to convolute it with our budget. This is not part of our budget.
Actually, I respect your approach and you have technically, you are correct. Actually, I respect your approach, and you have technically, you are correct on part of the budget, and in part of the budget, you're not correct. The village, the village is responsible for the debt. If the water fund doesn't have the debt, the village has to pay for it. So it, I I'm talking, so it's all a matter of putting it all together and letting people know. It is, what was coming down the pike is very significant. What's very significant for this village in terms of capital expenditures that are needed. They're very significant in terms of capital expenditure for infrastructure that are desired. And they're very, and then there are infrastructure for the waterworks that are needed and others that are desired. All of that comes into, you know, what has to be paid, and whether you take it out of one pocket or another, it all comes out of the the entire pocket of those who have to pay.
Okay, I will go through this one more time. That is not really the case, because water rate users, the more water you use, the more you you pay. So industries in this community, restaurants in this community, you know, people who have large lawns, golf courses in this community, they they pay a larger rate, and they pay disproportionately into it other than the taxpayer. And, you know, taxpayers can limit the water they're using. It's not like property taxes, where you really can't limit your property taxes if they go up. You can't say, I only, I'm not gonna use this part of my property. I've been explaining this for years. What we have to do, and this isn't a time to discuss, but what we have to do is when the Westchester Joint Water Works suggests a rate, we should adopt the rate, because they do that based upon what they anticipate the capital costs are gonna be. And I'll have them explain that to you. But to to conflate it with the Village of Amerenick budget and to try and use that as a tool to affect our budget is not smart budgetarily, and it really does not give the people of this community a good picture of where we are. This is the same thing when we talk about the sewer tax, too. Sewer tax, this is infrastructure that needs to be maintained, and it needs to be cared for. And, you know, if what was the point of having a sewer tax if we don't, you know, use that to fix our sewers? So, you know, and that's based upon the amount of water people use, too. So, you know, I I think that we we have to make sure that we're, as as Al Gore once famously said, put this in a locked box and use those locked boxes and concentrate on what we need to do to keep the tax rate low, and then how we actually have to fix our infrastructure that is in awful repair. So that that's really what I want to go. And as I said to Victor before, I will bring in the Westchester Joint Water Works to more fully explain this. I'm just asking everybody to keep an open mind.
And I agree with you, Tom. We all have to keep an open mind, and I agree with you of that you're taking out of different pockets, but it all basically comes out of the the debt service ability and the debt, the amount of debt the village can incur. And it it's it's still different than an industry. It's basically off-balance sheet financing. It's not, it's not, there's nothing illicit immoral with it, but the people should know, and we need to take a look at the holistic picture, so that when we say we're going to, you know, take a lot of money for, you know, the sewers and say, we're gonna just, you know, put it in the sewer tax, and a lot of money for the waterworks and put it into the water tax. And it doesn't affect the budget, it actually affects those residents in this village, regardless of how we do it. So it's important that we take a holistic view of it, even even though it comes out of different pockets. And I think you and I understand better than probably most people who are watching. And there you are technically correct in terms of different pockets to, you know, pay for, but it's, you know, you can't not use water in this village. You cannot not have sewer in this village. So they, these are all things that we have to do, you know, and be aware of and be very cognizant of as we do it, because in fact, we do control it. We do set the water rate. We do set the sewer rate, and we do set the, you know, the tax rate.
And and if if we don't set the water rate at an adequate level, it is going to fall upon people's tax rate, which they they, which is more burdensome. That's that's my point. That's my whole point here is to be brave enough to do what needs to be done with the avenues that are presented to us. And to not use these expenses that that are, you know, financed in other ways as a an excuse to, you know, in some way eviscerate our budget here in the Village of Amerenick. That's my.
Nobody's trying to eviscerate anything.
Well, I just want to make sure that this isn't used as a crudle to say that we can't afford so many things, because actually, we're not.
I think, I think we have.
We're not in awful financial shape. We're, you know, I think our staff has done an excellent job, and this board has done a good job of making sure that we are in good financial shape. And I've heard all kinds of, you know, people talking about how awful we are and in shape financially, and it's just not true. Ms. Hauptman has her hand up again.
Hi, the, I'm going way back to a Len comment on the debt service. So, Augie, on the budget that's posted for the current fiscal year, that's online, and I could send you the exact page numbers. Early on in the document, it says our debt service is two point seven million. And then towards the end, it says it's three point seven million, and that's the point of confusion. And I know in some of the emails we all had back and forth, you had said three point seven. So I'm going way back in a earlier conversation.
Thank you. Glenn.
What was that, Tom?
I said Glenn. Glenn has his hand up.
I'm sorry.
Hello, can you hear me? Hello?
Yeah, Glenn, go ahead.
Yeah, actually, I have it right in front of me. The last one updated with twenty and twenty-one estimate. We're looking at a tentative budget of two million three hundred thousand on the principal, and we're looking at nine hundred and fifty-one thousand on the interest, which is three point two five one on our debt service tentative for this year's budget. Quickly, when they were talking about the water rates years ago, I argued with the trustees. Obviously, once again, as a graduate of Amerenick High School, well above average, I was absolutely correct. We have to make sure that both the water rates go up to cover both the water and the sewer, because remember, the commercial use of water and sewer is much greater than the residential use. Have we done, are we doing recreation tonight?
No.
We're not doing recreation tonight. Okay. A couple of quick things. I am going to once again ask the trustees to have Jerry do the budget with the additional two hun, six hundred and two thousand dollars. That would bring the bring the budget up to the two percent level, because you just hired a court clerk that's not in the budget. You have no pay raises for any senior staff, whether that's what you plan to do. That's up to you, and you also have no raises for any police officers. And if you're planning to hire a full-time attorney, that is also not in the budget. You're you're very, very, we've already talked about it, you're very, very optimistic with the revenue. And I know we took some money out, but from the last two things that I saw were a hundred and eighty thousand over what was budgeted. I know Jerry saved fifty-four thousand in his office, but I'm not sure if he saved anything otherwise. But we were actually over a hundred and eighty thousand if you look at the one twenty-five revenue, and you look at the two-five expense report. So not only were we borrowing six hundred thousand, you're a hundred and eighty thousand over that minus Jerry saved fifty-four thousand. I'm not sure if he saved anything else in the budget, but the budget is as tight as can be. And I just named, you just hired a court clerk. It's not in the budget. You have police officers. You have no raises at all planned for the police officers. I'm sure that they're not looking at a contract with a pay freeze. You have absolutely no raises for senior staff.
I know.
And you don't have any raises in the budget for any senior staff. I would put the two hundred, the six hundred and two thousand dollars in the budget. Let Jerry and Augie, who have been doing an excellent job, rearrange that budget and then see where your numbers are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else have a common question concern? All right, we actually have tomorrow night off.
So, Mayor, can I finish sixteen eighty?
Oh, I'm sorry, Aug. Go ahead, pal.
Laura, can you bring that up, please? So one thing I want to mention to the board is this year, we 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 put Laserfish, our document retention software, online. It's the newest version, and it's it's a more robust search engine. However, we anticipated also upgrading our Municity three software to Municity five, which is also an online version of the software, and it allows both both pieces of software to communicate together. So far, we have not received approval to move forward with Municity five. If that's the case, in order for Laserfish to communicate with Municity three, we're going to have to restart up the server version of Laser, of Municity. That being said, that version is at end of life, and it will have to be replaced. So if any idea what a new server would cost and the replacement cost?
I mean, just rough estimation from stuff that we purchased in the past, a server minimum is ten thousand after its license. And that doesn't include any additional licensing for the software required for whatever product we end up going with.
The ten thousand is just for the hardware?
For the hardware and the Microsoft licensing, yeah, give or take.
Actually, that'll be more. That's great.
So if we went to municipal, municipal, whatever it is.
Municity.
Municity five, what would be the total cost versus not going there? They're both gonna have significant capital costs. So what what's one versus the other? Or have we done that analysis, or can we do that? Budget review.
Dan, do you remember off the top of your head what the cost was to upgrade to Municity five?
I think between, was it like sixty thousand in the first year, and then it goes down after that, just the.
Sixty and then thirty for, I think, four additional years.
And what?
Another thing about Municity with the server version, you know, in our current work-from-home environment, it's it's it's, you know, kind of useless, because unless you're physically in one sixty-nine now Pleasant Avenue, you'd be better off driving your vehicle to one sixty-nine avenue, getting on a computer there to access it. It's, you cannot access it unless you are in the building. It's it's very difficult and very inefficient for the staff.
And what's the cost of, it's gonna be more than just ten thousand dollars if we don't upgrade. So what's the cost estimated that we would have to spend to upgrade, you know, not to upgrade?
We'd have to do a full-blown analysis, but to the very least, we need a new server, and we need a backup server to, we need a a separate server to maintain all the video files. Cliff, what exactly is the name of that second piece? The NAS or something?
We, we've been purchasing from IX Systems, and they're called TrueNAS.
So can we have as part of this budget review an analysis of, you know, it doesn't have to be to the exact cent, but a, you know, a budgetary estimate of going one way versus the other, because we have to come to grips with what the benefits and detriments are of going each way.
Well, the detriment is, as of right now, they're no longer supporting Municity three. So unless, we could do the analysis for you, and we'll have it for at the next meeting.
I I think that would be very helpful, and I I share your concern of not being supported. So we, you know, but there are benefits. If we go to five, there may be cost savings that we can have because of its flexibility of being able to put more stuff online and having the public be able to access it easier. Unless I've misunderstood what I've been told in previous meetings.
Dan, one savings is that we're no longer required to back up disinformation. Once it's online, we no longer have to back up, and that's a cost savings right there.
Yeah, I I think, you know, there, part of the analysis, we'll have to detail some non-monetary items with each, like.
I think I think it's helpful, because one of the issues that we that, you know, we have been trying to focus on is setting priorities. We have lots of things that we would like to do, some of which we have, others of which we would like to do. But as Jerry says, you can't get everything. So the question is, what are the priorities in, you know, you know, and where do we want, you know, where do we want to draw the line? And I think we need to be able to evaluate all of them and then rank them in order of where we want to go.
Augie, do you have more to present?
Yes, so going now to through the sixteen eighty line, we're gonna take a look at the personnel lines first. Both Cliff and Joe are non-union, so their salaries are held flat. So there's there's no increase on that as far as percent increases. On the point-two codes, somebody has their mic open.
Len, that's Len's car or something in the background.
Cliff, can you mute him? As far as the point-two codes are concerned, we reduced the PC network printers down by twenty-eight percent. We're trying to meet the ten percent order that we received. And also, we're trying to save money. I mean, later on, if, once the budget gets back, this virus is behind us, we could look to start refreshing printers, networks, and everything. Right now, we're holding everything together as best we can. And we're we're very fortunate, because Cliff also has a knack of repairing old stuff. And if you walk into his office at any time, he'll have a set of goggles on and a blowtorch, and he's fixing something. So it's it's pretty interesting. Moving on to the next page.
He's like a MacGyver.
It's amazing, Tom. It's amazing. He fixes phones, he fixes printers, scanners, computers. And he doesn't throw anything out. So that's another issue, but he he just does an amazing job. So Dallas, we're looking at the point-four codes. The point-four codes overall have a decrease of one point six four, or is, I mean, negative five point four nine. The, we reduced we reduced ten MIS offices by twenty-three fifty in the current year, and that's because of the new Dell contract we have with New York State, where we have savings. Overall, the sixteen eighty account has gone down by negative four point five one. If anybody has any questions, I'm sure Cliff will be more than happy to answer in detail.
I hope not.
Anybody have any questions? That are less than detailed. Anything else, Aug?
I only have one thing. Thank you for the board for all the compliments my staff has received. I want to point out that the Clerk Treasurer's Office also has Jonathan Corvino. He was a new addition to the staff, and he does an amazing job. We have Tamika Wells, who does all the bank recs, receipts and receivables, and she does an amazing job. And we have Elena Peretto, who does all the billings. I can't say anything more for the staff. They're just amazing, and they make my life easier. A lot of the things we've adapted this year was because of their hard work and, you know, attitude towards it. Everything we tried, they said, no problem, let's move forward. So we're very fortunate. Uh, so we're very fortunate. That's all I had to add, Mayor.
Thank you. You're, you're, you're very, I agree a hundred percent. They're nice, nice people. They work hard. They're, they're an asset to this community. All right, uh, that being said, um, we, we will adjourn until seven forty-five when we will reconvene this meeting. Uh, the staff, who doesn't have to be at that seven forty-five part, uh, I wish you all a good night. Thank you all for your hard work. And, uh, we'll see you again next week and on TV.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
See you all seven forty-five.
We have to close this meeting, do we not?
No.
No.
No, no, no. This meeting stays open. You're, you're going into executive session at seven forty-five.
We're taking a break until seven forty-five.
Thank you.
Cliff, can you leave this up with the? And you.
With the clock.
With the clock.
Sure of the clock. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll set something up real quick.
Hey, you guys are great. Great, great presentations. I just.
Thank you.
Love, love, love.
Thank you.
Tell Sally too.
I will.
And Laura, thanks.
I'll tell the whole staff. I mean, they really do an amazing job.
No kidding.
And I'm, I'm really grateful to have them.
We're a lucky village.
We are, we are. Okay, so I'll see you at seven forty-five.
Okay, enjoy the break.
Good night.
Hi, how's everybody doing?
Hi Augie, do you have a good dinner?
You belong in executive session right now.
Okay, we're not gonna convene as police-
Hold on one second, let me-
Do you have the executive session link?
I do, we don't need to convene as police commissioners here first?
Yeah.
You're right.
And then bring the motion to go into executive session?
You're right, you're right, let me get Tom out of there.
No, we could do that.
You have three.
We have three.
You have three.
Dan Natchez and Tom are in, let me just tell them what you're doing.
Okay.
Be patient.
One second please.
So it has some basic personal-
Tom?
Information on their, in relation to their family history, their status, their education. A lot of the information that we need in their resume.
No, we, that, we can hear that.
Yeah. I'm not sure we should.
No, well.
I just muted Augie.
Thanks Cliff.
No, I don't, oh, I got it, okay.
Do you have the wording in front of you Nora?
Uh, no, because we never got an-
Right, we never quite updated it. Well, it's a personnel or employment matter.
No, well, we're convening-
As a police commissioner first.
Number is 105, hold on.
Just say, just say police commissioners.
Looks like they're coming back, at least danded.
We've been duly scolded.
No, it's not.
Thank you.
Hi, I got kind of lost in cyberspace there. The whole gang here, the whole gang is here, okay. Need a motion to go into executive session as a board of police commissioners to consider the, the future employment of individuals with the Village of Amerik Police Department.
So moved.
Excellent.
Augustino Coro.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee Winship?
Yes.
Trustee Natchez?
Yes.
Trustee Tefor? Mayor Murphy?
Hi, I'll see you back in the other day. We gotta come back here Augie afterwards, right?
That is correct, to adjourn the meeting.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Is the exec from, from yesterday? Where's the link for the executive meeting?
Oh, I got it, I got it earlier today.
I'll send you, I'll send you an invitation.
Thanks, thank you very much. Thanks, thank you very much.
Cliff?
Are you there? Can you hear me?
Augie, you hosting?
Yes, I am hosting.
Okay. So we are live, is it work?
Yes, it's recording.
It's recording.
Okay. Good evening. We have just come out of executive session. In that exec, in that executive session, the village of Amerenek, Board of Trustees, acting as a Board of Police Commissioners, took a vote to offer a position as a patrolman to one of the candidates. It was a unanimous vote and pending the candidate's acceptance and administrative procedures being taken care of, we will be announcing the candidate's name at the next Board of Trustees meeting. But thank you all very much. That concludes the Village of Amerenek Board of Trustees work for this evening. I can entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night everybody. Have a good weekend.
Good night.
Aye.